He slows down usually like the doctors start taking somers like some big patients. But it's real. It's good. Best year ever for Pat is April. Yeah, April. I mean, April is expensive. I can sell. Can I sell? I am so good, but you know unfortunately unfortunately I have to focus on my looks. Well, uh...
Good evening, folks. We are expecting councillor Day to join us, but I'm just not sure at what point here, so we don't want to keep things going. Councillor Logan will be absent this evening. He had a previous engagement. So I will call the special committee of the whole meeting Tuesday, June 25th to order, and it is 5:35. Looking for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? opposed, motion carried. There is only one item on our agenda this evening, and that is a report that has been brought to us through councillor Lukens. And I'm glad to see that as many people have showed up as we have here through various website announcements and emails and that sort of thing. So welcome and thanks for coming. We keep it kind of informal, so if there's something that the public would like to engage in, we'd be happy to hear from you as well. So the microphone is before you. I'm not entirely sure if it's actually turned on, but we'll find that out shortly. And please state your name when you come to the podium so that it can be recorded. And I do believe we're in operations with our camera as well, so it helps. So with that, councillor Lukens, I'll turn it over to you, and you can introduce your report.
Thank you. So the amalgamation exploration question, exploring the merits, is what I'm looking to present tonight. And the report provides council the opportunity to offer Callwood residents the ability to have their say as to whether or not they would like the city of Callwood to engage in exploring the concept of amalgamation for the thirteen municipalities located in the Greater Victoria region. I want to make it clear that this report is not about whether we amalgamate or not, whether we amalgamate thirteen municipalities as one. That's not what this is about. It's about starting from the beginning and engaging the public and allowing our citizens the opportunity to say whether or not they would like to see their city participate should the opportunity present itself in the process of exploring what the analysis is, what the models might be for amalgamation, or at the very least, what the regionalization of services could look like in order to create better services or enable better services, and potentially at more cost, potentially at less cost. We don't know what that is. So to clarify once again, the decision is not to approve or recommend amalgamation. It's to ask whether or not council is in support of providing the opportunity for Callwood citizens to have their say, whether or not they would like the city to participate in the process regarding amalgamation by having a question placed on the 2014 municipal election ballot. And the question would be non-binding. It's difficult to make a decision without any accurate information about what the impacts, costs, and/or benefits would be regarding amalgamation. And with council's support on this most topical issue, the process of exploration can start. How I got onto this was when I was campaigning for my election in 2011, and I think at every other door, people asked me what I thought of amalgamation, and I couldn't answer the question. We know what's happened in Toronto. We know what's happened in Halifax. We know that Abbotsford and Matzke amalgamated successfully. So, but we don't know what it means for us. We don't have the numbers and we don't have the information. I'm also aware that the province does allocate $60,000 per annum in order to participate and undertake these types of consultations. And so I have spoken to the provincial government about this. So depending on if other municipalities will put the question on or not, and what the question is, we don't know yet. In the end, if the decision by citizens of Callwood is to participate or not to participate in exploring the modeling around amalgamation, then council has a clear mandate from its citizens that they are not interested in pursuing it any further. So the options before us tonight, Callwood Council, actually it would be Committee of the Whole making a recommendation to council, is or is not in support of placing a question on the 2014 municipal ballot, asking Callwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process should it present itself. The question has not been identified yet. I would propose that there be an engagement with our citizens to find out what the question is. There is also a organization called Amalgamation Yes that is hoping to come up with some sort of a question, too. It would be nice if everybody that was going to participate put the same question on so we can compare apples to apples. So the financial implications with respect to this report as it stands is there is no cost value. All we have to make sure we do is get the question into elections B.C. in advance to get on the ballot, and they'll be printed, and it's part of the cost of a municipal election. However, I am going to be putting forward a second recommendation that is not on the report tonight, and I'll speak to that in a moment. So the recommendation is that committee recommend to council that council support the initiative to have a question placed on the 2014 municipal election ballot, asking Callwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process of amalgamation. And the second recommendation is going to be that the committee recommend to council that staff identify $3,000 for public engagement slash consultation, advertising, radio, those sorts of things. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll first open it to the public for any comments or whatever. Come on up.
The mic's not on.
Right at the very bottom, Stu. There's a little switch.
You can pull the mic out. There you go. Yeah.
There we go. Thank you.
Stuart Parkinson, 3230 Seligway. And I'm here tonight to ask you not to put the question on the ballot and to stop talking about amalgamation. As a citizen of Callwood, I have access to seven elected representatives for 15,000 people. I think that's a pretty good ratio. But I have friends in Sanitich or Victoria who have access to about the same number of representatives for about every 10,000 people. I get one for every 2,000 people. And I don't think there's a heck of a lot of difference in the services in either city, to be honest. When I ride my bike around town, I don't notice that one city fills its potholes or cleans the gravel much different than any others do. When my house is on fire, I really don't care if the fire truck that shows up says Callwood on the side, or Machosen, or Timbuktu, as long as it gets there and it's got proper people with it and all that kind of stuff. So I don't think that the question is amalgamation. I think that's the wrong question to be asking. I know if I bring an issue to you guys, you're going to talk about it, and if it's worthy, you're going to look for some action, and you'll probably turn it over to one of your staff to do something. And maybe that's Chris. Chris is a good C.A.O. You know, I'm guessing out of the 13, he's probably in the top half. He's a good guy. Being a C.A.O. means that Chris is a guy who knows a little bit about an awful lot of different things. And I wonder whether 13 guys in this community who know a little bit about an awful lot of different things is the right way to run this greater region. What about if we had one guy who knew a little bit about a lot of things and four assistants who knew a lot about fewer things? So there's lots of different ways that the community could be run. There's a whole bunch of different ways. And we know that the C.R.D. is probably going to be the same boundaries in two generations from now as it is now. We know the population now is about, I'm going to guess, 350,000, and in 20 or 30 or 40 or 50 or 100 years, maybe it's going to be half a million. So we know what we've got. We've got a community of this size and about this many people. And frankly, if somebody was to stop and look at, what's the best way to run that community? Is it to have 13 fire departments and 13 C.A.O.s and who knows how many payroll clerks and stuff like that? Or is there a better way? That's what we should be looking at. And we can just say, forget the existing boundaries. Let's look at what is the right way and the most cost-effective and efficient way to provide the services that we want and are prepared to pay for, and how do we get the quality of life that we have now and to keep it as it is or keep increasing? So I think when you start saying, what about changing the boundaries of the community? I don't think that matters. I really don't. I think it's what are we trying to do and how's the best way to do it? We had this year, I think, a three and a half percent tax increase. Reasonable, I think, was the words I got on my tax notice, but that means it's going to double in 20 years. I don't think most people can expect to have in 20 years twice as much money as they have now. So maybe we do have to do things more efficiently and more effectively. I think the political structure is the last thing to look at. I think you want to look at, what are we trying to do? What services are we trying to deliver? What's the right way to do them? And once you know that, and you start working towards that, and it's probably going to take 20 years to adjust things, then you can say, you know, does it matter? Does Callwood have its council and everybody else has theirs or not? I don't know. But I think when you start talking about amalgamation, you're looking at a problem and you're starting in the middle, and you're not going back to the beginning. So I would say, forget talk about political boundaries and stuff like that. Let's look at how we should be delivering what services and what's the right way to do that. Once we know that, have an idea, and people may still say, well, it's more efficient to do it this way, but we like it that way and we'll pay? I'm okay with that. But let's figure out what we're trying to do and how we should be doing it, and then let's the political boundaries fall out from that. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, Bill Wagner, 1432498. Holy smokes. That's a senior moment. 3451 Fulton Road, Victoria, Callwood. Sorry about that. I take a different view. I think that we need to amalgamate, and I would ask council to put that on the ballot as a choice for its citizens. By definition, redundancy is expensive and inefficient. We have a great deal of redundancy in the Victoria area, Greater Victoria area, and I know that it's expensive. I don't want to get into anything personal, but sufficient to say that I believe by consolidating, amalgamating, a lot of efficiencies could be made and a lot of money could be saved. So I'm in support of council putting that question on the ballot. Thank you.
Gail Johnston, 245 Shipp's View Place. Thank you, councillor Lukens, for following through on a campaign issue and bringing this to the council of the whole. I would like to express my support for an amalgamation in some form for the Capital Regional District. The existing system of 13 municipalities, mayors, councils, fire chiefs, et cetera, cannot be as cost-effective in the long run as, say, three larger municipalities. I am sure there is very little political will to change this status quo, but we don't need to waste time and taxpayers' monies doing one study after another. So I challenge this council to show some leadership, enter into a dialogue with Langford and Duroy to get the ball rolling, and ensure that there is a question on amalgamation on the ballot in 2014. Let the Western communities lead the way and show the rest of Victoria what can be accomplished when we work and coordinate together for government grants and solutions to our common problems with transportation, sewage, infrastructure, et cetera. In conclusion, yes, let's participate in this exploration. And I also have an email from someone who was not able to be here. I don't know if I can read that out or not. This is from Debbie and Jim Wakeman on Matilda Drive. They said, we too would like to see the question on the 2014 election ballot. Thank you.
Rod Phillips, 304 Daniel Place. I think the reason why the question of amalgamation is sweeping over the region, the capital region, is because we're questioning whether the political, operational, and financial models that we've used for the last number of years can still handle the issues we have today and in the future. So I think it's required and incumbent upon you to put the question in front of the citizens because we're not just dealing with the issues that we have in the past. We have bigger questions to answer in the future. And all those questions have to be answered in an efficient area, in an efficient manner, and therefore we need to ask the question about, are we able to deal with the issues that we're going to face politically, operationally, and financially? Those are my two cents, and I'd love to see that question on the ballot. Cheers.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pierre Valliot. I live at 3535 Crowdford Place. The question is to, I understand it, put it on the ballot. Now, the form of the question should be very, very important because it's a good idea to put it on the ballot, whether some people agree with it or not. And we should understand what amalgamation is, and we should be able to define it. Should it be integration, cooperation? There's various forms of doing that sort of thing. So before you put it on the ballot, or the form that it goes on the ballot, it should be clearly defined so that people understand. There's a lot of people that are going to be reading different things, and they're going to be wondering, it's a word, how do we, what does it mean to us? How does it apply? If we're not going to be able to optimize or improve things, there's no point in even pursuing it. So define it, set the goals and objectives, be very careful so that people, everybody who's going to vote understands what the word is, what it means, and so on. And then there's a mode, method, and model. Maybe if it is yes, there should be a careful transition, which services and interests should be integrated, and in what order. You can't do it overnight. People are reluctant to change. So identify the way it should be done. The key is to be informed and really define what we're trying to do and what it means. That would be a step if you put it on the ballot, which you should.
Don't be shy.
Hi, Len Wansgro, 83 Melbourne Drive. Lived in Callwood since 1986, and our family's had a business here since '76. Currently doing development work on several municipalities, Lady Smith South, and I deal with a bunch of different municipalities. Maybe the word amalgamation, it has a connotation of political, what's in it for me politically versus what's in it for me for services, right? But on the level I deal with is really about the service level. You know, I get great service from Callwood with being able to speak to somebody. When I go to Sanitich in the planning department, nobody seems to want to make a decision. You have like five meetings, and then they bring their lawyer to a meeting, and you're just trying to get a rezoning done, right? Where here, you can actually sit down with staff and come up with, you know, some kind of suggestions and move projects forward. And I do like that in smaller municipalities. The sort of the bigger picture of maybe this, what services we're trying to figure out how to do is, you know, when you look at the disaster in Calgary, and you think of an earthquake coming here, my neighbor who, when I lived on Fulton Road, was in emergency services for the city of Victoria, and yet Langford has their own emergency services. It's so, in my mind, dysfunctional the way that we're trying to operate right now, and there's got to be a better way for the services. And so maybe the amalgamation word, which has been brought up several times in Callwood, and we've had votes on it in the past, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, but maybe it's a different word or connotation, but really I think we've got to talk about services and how to get it more efficient. Because I don't think, you know, the communities that we're competing with in the business, in the development industry, are trying to bring industry, well, we kicked all the industry out of Victoria, basically, but you're trying to attract industry. And I operated a business in Surrey, and my rent was $4.50 a foot, my common costs were $2.50 a foot in an industrial area. In Callwood, you know, really, I can get as low as $6.50, but the average is $10, right? Why is that? Well, 75% of it's pro taxes. And it isn't the developer, the landlord that pays that, it's the tenant. And so we're trying to attract and be efficient. We've got to, we're in a world economy, and we've got to figure out how to bring the cost of those services down because we're doing it elsewhere, and we need to figure this out. Thanks.
Do we have any other voices in the audience? Seeing none? Then I'll open it to council. Councillor Lukens?
Thank you. Just to follow up, and I agree with some of the comments made, and just to reiterate, the question that I'm proposing that go on the ballot has not been created yet, number one. Number two, yes, I've used the word amalgamation because that's the word that everybody relates to. However, as I mentioned in my report, the objective would be to go through the process of identifying, are there opportunities with potentially amalgamation, whether it be three communities, six communities, maybe it's the ward system? Or at the very least, in the end, we find out if there's services that could be regionalized that will be more functional, which is what a few of you have already spoken of. So I just want to be clear, the question I'm not asking, I'm not asking for the question to include the word amalgamation. It's about exploring what our options are to make our region better and more functional. So I just want to make sure we're clear. Everybody's on the same page. I know it's hard. I'm not asking if we amalgamate or not. That's not the question.
Members of committee? Sure?
I don't mind. I'm definitely supportive of moving forward. And, you know, if I was to strictly stay on the recommendation, I think the recommendation to participate, to explore the process of amalgamation, I'm supportive of. I'm not necessarily sure if I'm supportive itself, though, of amalgamation. And I think it's also important for us to realize that there's things that we already do. For example, I sit on the West Shore Park and Rec, which is a combination of six municipalities working together to create park and rec things. I also sit on the Greater Victoria Library Board, and that, again, is services that are being combined for the benefit of the entire community. And those type of things, I think, are very strong, and we need to continue to increase those services. I understand the financial argument, too, that we need to make sure that we're financially accountable and that we're doing things as efficiently as possible. The problem is, though, you know, we had a graph that was given to us that showed, you know, there's 136 elected officials versus, for example, 69 in the Greater Toronto. Sometimes accountability is good to have, and it's good to have somebody very local. I mean, right now, the city of Callwood is frustrated with the C.R.D. because our voice is so small, and we don't have that ability, and things are being dictated to us as a community. And to lose that voice, to be able to say, we want to have a decision on what happens here in the Western communities, here in our neighborhoods, I think is important. And if we look at a true amalgamation where we lose that, we might lose that voice here in the West Shore. So it's one of those things, I think, it's important to explore, though, and I think it's to understand where we want to be in the future is important. So I will definitely support that it goes on to the next, or at least I will support the recommendation. I also think that we need to be realistic, that there's a cost to this exploration, and so that for us to find $3,000 as a second motion is probably something that's quite reasonable.
Councillor Collington?
Thank you, Your Royalship. Couple of questions off the top of the bat. Through you to the C.A.O., what is approximately the cost of putting a question on the ballot?
It's not particularly much. In terms of the last election, I think the cost was somewhere in the vicinity of about $27,000. Putting a question on is just whatever it costs to put it on the ballot, but there's a larger cost in terms of informing the public what they're voting on. That's where the cost comes, where you have the public input processes, you get the research that's done behind this. So, you know, you're probably looking at conservative estimate, probably somewhere in the vicinity of $30,000 to $60,000. in the vicinity of $30,000 to $60,000, just for the West Shore.
Okay. Second question through the chair to Councilor Lukenz. I know that you've been having conversations with amalgamation, yes, and therefore your colleagues, our colleagues around the region. Do you have any sense of our 13 different municipalities? Is it likely that two of us will put a question on the ballot, 12 of us will put a question on the ballot? I know it's early, I know a lot of other councils have not discussed this yet, but are you getting an indication that, I mean, I guess what I'm afraid of is, we put the question on the ballot, but nobody else does? And therefore, what are the implications of that?
Yeah, and that's something that I have talked to the CAO about with respect to, if we get to the process of being ready to put the question on the ballot, and that's why I wanted to start early, so we have 18 months to go through this exercise. And in the end, if we know that other municipalities are not going to do this, does it make sense to do it? Or if we go through the exercise and put the question on the ballot, there is not a cost to putting the question on the ballot. That way, the next council has a mandate, should it come and arise again, the opportunity. I have engaged with several councillors and mayors across the region. I do know of two others for certain that are planning on bringing this forward to their councils. There are others that would like to, but need to do a little bit of soliciting slash lobbying with their counterparts to get a flavor of where they're at. So I think there would be more, but again, we're a little ways away from people, and they wanted to see what happened here tonight in the discussion that was going to occur.
Thank you. I've probably always held some fairly strongly held views on amalgamation. Certainly, when I look at how it's worked in other municipalities, I don't see cost savings happening. There might be some other really good reasons to do it, but I always feel that cost savings are not one of them. I know it's not logical, it doesn't feel rational, but you look at what's happening everywhere else, and that's been the consistent message. Having said that, there might be other good reasons for doing it. Next of all, I always, and I heard some members of the public raise this as well, I always get concerned when we have a conversation around amalgamation. Because amalgamation is perhaps the answer, but what we really need to be doing is asking the questions, and I heard some of you raise this. So what's working really well? I heard a few people say, you know, it's really nice to have easy access to our staff, easy access to the politicians. You know, so what's working really well? What's not working well? What are some of the things where we really are challenged? So, you know, issues like regional policing, emergency services kind of keep bumping up to the top of the list. So I would certainly welcome an exploration of, region-wide, of what's working well, what's not working well, and then leading that conversation into, okay, this is not working well. Is amalgamation the solution, or is some more integration across various different services the answer? So I think that, to me, is a better question than, we keep getting tied into amalgamation, and what the heck does that?
So you've just hit the nail on the head, just so you know. That's exactly what the objective is. It's not amalgamation.
Yeah.
It's about what's working, what isn't working, what does the modeling look like? You know, exactly. You've hit the nail on the head.
But I'm seeing the word amalgamation in the recommendation, so that's what I'm responding to.
Because they will, what I would like to see is the modeling around what that looks like, and I know what you say with respect to the costs. You know, we know that costs are not, you know, typically something that people can save. But I think what the opportunity here is, is to be able to go through the exercise and be able to present to our public what it means here and what it looks like. It's easy to look at Halifax, it's easy to look at Toronto, it's easy to look at Winnipeg, but that's not Victoria. People need to see it in their hometown.
Okay, I'm going to finish now.
Yep.
You're getting ahead of me, Ms. Lukenz. Okay. So, and like Councilor Martin, I looked at this paper, which sort of said, is more government, better government, and look at the kind of, you know, 69 politicians in the city of Toronto versus 136 in our region. And the other question that came to my mind is, well, when you look at the kind of the total payroll for all of these, I'm betting the 69 are probably getting more than the 136, because anybody who doesn't want to get well-paid, come and sit at this table. So, you know, I hope sometimes getting a good deal out of this. I know it doesn't always feel that way. So I said, that's, you know, that's my opinion on amalgamation, but frankly, my opinion doesn't matter. It's public opinion that matters on this one. Does the public want to have this conversation or not? Councilor Lukenz raised the idea of, you know, going into an engagement, which makes sense, going into engagement with citizens of Colwood to say, you know, do you want this question on the ballot? What question do you want on the ballot? And what occurred to me is, actually, are we at this table potentially jumping the gun on that by looking at this recommendation? Maybe what we need to do is to, I love the fact that six of you stood up and shared your opinion. I'm incredibly surprised that the rest of you in the room didn't share your opinion, because I've never known you to be shy. But there's lots and lots of people who are not in this room. So my question to my colleagues, just to throw it out there, is, should we perhaps do something very simple? You can do Survey Monkey, which is cheap like crazy, to go out and say, you know, and ask the question of our public. Would you like us to think about putting this question on the ballot? Here's two or three sample questions that might be asked. That starts the process of our thinking about that. And then we get more people with an ability to have input and say, yeah, this is important to us. We really do want to have this question on the ballot. We really do want to sort of start the process of engaging in this discussion. Or not? It might just kind of start to give us more input than we're able to get just from a single committee meeting. So I will throw that out for committee's consideration. And I would, if we go with the recommendation that we have before us, for myself, I'd like to see, it's got this kind of clause in there, sort of, should the opportunity present itself? And I think it's kind of, it would behold us to do some thinking around, you know, if we're the only ones doing it, does it make sense? Or do we need to kind of make sure that we're engaging at least X percentage of the municipalities? And I'm not going to suggest how that might work. So throw out some thoughts for committee's consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Cullington. Anyone else?
Me.
You going to go back?
Sure.
Just a couple things, just because it made me think of it. I mean, there's nothing wrong with us, again, being a leader within the municipalities, that, you know, even if nobody else does an amalgamation question. I think for us to be out there saying, listen, this is what our community thinks, I mean, that starts the process. The second thing is, I understand what you're saying about Survey Monkey, but I think personally, it's just me personally, so, that this is a big enough question, and it's been in the media, and it's been in the public sphere enough, that it's time that we put it to our constituents, and we give it to the public and say, tell us. You know, and that's the idea of a referendum. And it may be, no, nobody in Colwood is interested at all, but at least it's out there, then. And people have had that opportunity to say yes or no. And I just think that it's big enough, that it's, it's not like we're just, nobody's ever even thought of this before. So it's a question that's been out there long enough that I think it's time to be asked. So that's all, that's all I wanted to comment on.
My turn.
Sure.
Question to our CAO through the chair. Is there a limit to the number of referendum questions we can have on our ballot?
Through the chair, no, there is not. The thing is, you don't want to have a ballot that has masses of questions. What you want to do is try and keep the number of questions down to a few, preferably one or two, because then the public have got a better idea on what they're voting on.
Thank you, because I remember in 2012, when this council was first elected, we actually did approve a referendum question on the ballots with respect to the Lagoon Bridge, if I'm not mistaken. So that's already sitting on the books for the next election. That's, okay, so there's no limit, then. I think we also need to be careful about the concept of amalgamation versus our expected outcomes. And I think I heard loud and clear from some people in the gallery that, you know, amalgamation is a concept of, you know, trying to, I think, find efficiencies region-wide and shared partnerships for services. And I think there's examples of municipalities who have actually found cost savings as a result of privatizing some of the services, and other municipalities where costs grew exponentially and didn't save any money, but perhaps streamlined and made things a little bit more efficient. I'm not opposed to actually asking our residents whether or not they want us to explore this, but I think we need to be really, really careful about what our residents think the expected outcomes are going to be. Because if we create some false expectations with respect to, this is going to be great, and we're going to save money, and your taxes are going to go down, and then they don't, I think that's not an enviable position for any council to be in. So I, with those caveats, I will support this recommendation being moved forward to council for a decision.
Thank you. And for me, I'm still, it's not about asking for information. I think to be deciding whether there's a question on the ballot at this time, 18 months in advance, is putting the cart before the horse. We need to get the information from the people. We need to have and engage in those conversations. We need to participate in surveys and do whatever it takes. I sit at the CRD board, and that's the one thing in this job that wakes me at night, frustrated as hell over the dysfunction that happens down there. And if that's what I see in our future as an amalgamated region, I'd run screaming from the idea. But I am a believer in a better way to do things. So I am caught on a double-edged sword to determine, in my capacity, what is the best way to go forward. I'd be happy to create a committee that would look to engaging more of the public on the, in the next 15 months, so that we could have those conversations, so we could get that information out, and we could, you know, get maybe a better sense of what it, would it mean, or what is it that the residents might be looking for? I'd be supportive of all the measures of engagement, you know, with respect to website and surveys and that sort of thing. I'd even recommend that as a starting point, instead of what we're recommending here, is that we start with the very least of engaging with the other 12 municipalities, and let them know that we're having this discussion, that we, you know, are open to that, and we want to know, what are they doing? What are their councils doing officially? What are they doing with their public in asking questions or dealing with those kinds of concerns? That have been raised, as Commissioner Martin has said, over and over again. Most often, we hear of it around election time, because it seems to be something, sometimes I think a little media-driven, as far as, you know, maybe we're better off in all-in-one, but I tell you, we have to be careful of the question, and I think we have to be careful, you know, as Commissioner Harvey's indicated, you know, what are our expected outcomes on doing this? It is a non-binding question, so there is no mandate to a future council. It's just a question asked. So, you know, before we get to that part, I'd be far more willing to hold those meetings. Come sit in your living room. Let's have conversation. But I'm just not, I don't know if I'm there for a decision specific to a question on the ballot at this time. Commissioner Lukenz?
Thank you. Just to respond to that, so I absolutely agree. The engagement is the most important thing. I don't want to end up in the sewage debacle that the CRD is. So I'm not looking to identify the question tomorrow. I want to go through the engagement process, have town hall meetings, have coffee shop meetings, do, you know, surveys, put it on the website, get people's input. I'm more than happy to see a committee be formed. People can, you know, submit an application, whatever we decide, in order to, you know, get a well-rounded committee and diverse, you know, voices. But the objective is to go, that's why starting 18 months out is to arrive in 15 months from now, maybe a question that we agree can be put on the ballot and can be shared with our public in advance of the election, to be able to educate them, to let them know what the referendum question is going to be on the ballot and why, so that everybody has the context. At the next elections, when they do the debates, have somebody there that can speak on what the referendum question's going to be, so that those are participating in the debates, get a clear understanding of what they're actually going to be voting on. It's one more avenue to get the message out. Anything we can do to make sure that people are informed, that's what the opportunity is. It is not, in the end, to just have a question on the ballot. It's about engaging the public to move this process forward.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Through the chair. A question to Commissioner Lukenz, is it the intent to actually have the very same question on every municipality's ballot that actually chooses to participate?
Well, as I said in my report, it would be nice to be able to compare apples to apples. So, yeah, that ultimately would be the objective, but noticing what happens around the CRD table, that we can all come to the same consensus, isn't possibly reality. However, I agree that if we start this ball rolling, and I agree with Commissioner Martin, taking the lead in this, identifying what our process is going to be, and continue to engage with other councils, leverage the mayor's ability, you know, at the CRD table to have those conversations, and see if we can come to some sort of alignment or consensus as a region to get the ball rolling in a positive manner. I think it's a great opportunity, and it shows leadership.
Thank you. Through the chair. Just a follow-up question with respect to that. Do we have to go through the CRD to get this done, or can we approach other municipalities ourselves?
No, we can, we can.
We can do whatever.
I pick up the phone and call.
Good, because I shiver like the mayor does when it comes to.
No, no, no. I'm just, he sits at that table, and there's engagement. In fact, Commissioner Gudgeon from Victoria was anticipating to be here this evening, however, had an emergency come up and couldn't. So, you know, there are a few that were going to come. You know, there's one from View Royal that wanted to participate as well, but it just didn't turn out. So, you know, it's unfortunate they couldn't show their support, but there are others that are very interested.
And just one further comment. It's with respect to the timeline around the 18 months, and I agree, and I think we're saying the same thing. It's really important to actually start the dialogue now with our residents, because they can help inform us, and we can help inform them, and have the conversation about what do you expect from us through this question on the ballot? What do you expect from shared services amalgamation? And get it really clear in everyone's minds. I think having that conversation start later is not to our advantage, because people will be answering a question that they don't understand, potentially. So I agree with the mayor's suggestion that we strike a committee. I'm fully supportive of that, and I'm also fully supportive of striking it now and getting the dialogue going.
Commissioner Cullington?
Thank you. Couple of comments, questions. One is with respect to, I think we're all very clear that that engagement process is absolutely vital to this. I am a little scared by the CAO's estimate of time, and so I think we need to set this up in a way that absolutely minimizes staff time in this and uses council and members and citizen engagement in the process, and also kind of working across the region with, I guess, other folks who are members of this amalgamation, yes, group. Because I would hate to see a lot of staff time getting distracted into this at this stage. So I think that's worth thinking about, how we do that. Madam Mayor, am I right in thinking the recommendation has not been placed on the table yet?
No, there has been.
Okay. I would make a couple of suggestions to the wording of the recommendation. One is that where it says the exploration process of amalgamation, it should say, I suggest. suggest that it would say amalgamation or integration of services. So kind of making it clear that, that we're, we're not just looking at one solution, we're looking at kind of perhaps a range of solutions. And I would love to see a second part to that recommendation or a separate recommendation that we engage the public through surveys and other means to better identify public interest in and expectations of this ballot question.
Oh, what about the committee? Letter to council?
I, I haven't put it on the table yet. I'm just throwing, I'm, I didn't make a motion.
I'm not comfortable with, you're not comfortable with that? Putting, having anything to do with putting a cart before the horse, like you got in. Get rid of, get rid of the question on the ballot. Undertake this and this.
Right of order.
No.
No, it hasn't.
No. No, we're just still in discussion. Pat, has it not, you don't have it recorded as a move, a motion moved in the beginning?
Well, we've got a recording up there that.
Madam Chair, if I may suggest, before you move it, I suggest making sure that we got the wording, because then you don't have to make any amendments to it.
Exactly. Yeah, I, I think that we, we need to review. You know, for me, again, I'll reiterate that I'm not comfortable with the idea of identifying a question on the ballot now before we've identified the process, how we're going to get there. So, again, more comfortable with a letter going out to other councils for engagement, comfortable with a task force committee and setting up a terms of reference, comfortable with, with, you know, public interaction and engagement through surveys and website and blogs and, and those kinds of things. But ultimately, it will lead to perhaps a, a question on the ballot, but at this point to be identifying that there will be a question on the ballot for 2014 might be a bit early. Councilor Cullington?
I would agree with that and wonder if we could modify the wording, support the initiative to consider having a question placed on the 2014 ballot.
What about the task force committee has a mandate to determine whether or not the citizens of Colwood want a question on the ballot?
I think they just report back to.
Sorry, I, I, I completely disagree with where you guys are going with this. It's, it's, it's time that we either make a decision that we're going to put this to the public or we're not going to put this to the public. I understand that we need to go through the, the process of deciding what the question's going to be, but we have to at some point say, listen, we're, we're moving towards this, that we're, we want to put a question about, for lack of a better word, amalgamation, and is, is the citizens of Colwood interested in that or not? And, and I get, I get personally frustrated if we, if we continually delay it and say, well, let's, let's examine if the question should be asked to, to. What we need to do is, and I think what this is saying is that we have initiative that we want to put a question on the next municipal election and the question will be around that and that in the next, in the next 18 months, we have that ability to form what that question will be. If, if this committee says, no, we're not going to do that, then that's fine. I mean, we can, we cannot do that, but I think we need to be clear that we're, we're stymating the whole, the whole thing here. At least that's how I feel. So I, I won't be supporting something that says we're just going to try and fine-tune a question without having a commitment that we're actually going to put it to our community.
I, I think we need to have an end goal, and that is to have a question formed. So again, I reiterate back to my report, and that is, don't know what the question is today. And the question is not about whether or not we're going to amalgamate. I like Counselor Cullington's suggestion with respect to a commitment to investigate, you know, better services, better regionalization of services. But the entire objective, and I like the idea of forming a committee, I have no problem, I have no prob, problem chairing that, I will take a lead role, I don't care. But I think we need to engage people, go through the exercise, all of the things that you're identifying, engage, continue to work with amalgamation, yes, reach out to other municipalities, hope to bring them on board and support it. But I think we need to get, you know, take a lead role here as opposed to continuing to the tail wag the dog.
Sorry, Madam Chair, there's one issue here is you can't amalgamate with anybody unless there are others that want to amalgamate with you. So that part of the question has to be explored and how do we get that out to get other interest? Just talking about a question that we may or may not put on the, on the ballot is irrelevant if there's no other jurisdiction interested.
So... How do we move that forward then?
Well, I think one of the things that would probably help to actually move this along is we have to create some sort of framework, so something to the effect that create a task force with a mandate to create the framework to explore amalgamation and/or integration. That gets it going, the actual, this task force does the work, it comes forward with a plan, and from that you can move forward. And part of that moving forward is exploring the idea with other jurisdictions close by.
Just a point of clarification.
Pardon?
I, I just a point of clarification. A committee with a mandate to explore, but I didn't hear putting a question on the ballot?
Report back.
So, so you're suggesting committee report back and then we decide whether or not we're going to put a question on the ballot?
Quite frankly, I don't think you have to answer that question now. You can answer that question one week before the election virtually. I think you have to do all the exploration and I think that the, the question or whether the question should be there will come out of the entire process. What you're trying to do is engage the public and try to garner interest and hopefully regional interest in it, and the way is to get a process in place that can do that and not to worry about, too much about the question at this early stage.
Have you got any sort of semblance of wording? Recommendation with all that?
So, so just to be clear, what we're suggesting right now is that the tail continue to wag the dog?
Wolf.
No? No, no. No, I just want to be clear, I'm sorry. I'm getting lost in the bureau speak and, and I'm usually pretty good at, you know.
Can I, can I clear that up again? Wolf.
Oh dear. I'm a cat person.
Mr. Pease, you had language for a possible motion. Are you able to read it out?
Certainly. And again, it's really open to more definition, but what it was, was create a task force with a mandate to create the framework to explore amalgamation and/or integration services, integrated services.
There's, there, yeah, there, there might be an add-in. You know, to cover, to blend things.
So as we're saying with the intent to?
Yeah. Yeah, but it just, they... If we put, if they... The way that it reads here to me, interpretively, it would mean that, you know, support the initiative to have the question put on the ballot. So without the question being asked and, and the ballot outcome, then where's our mandate to be doing any other work on this? So I'm trying to get the work done before we get to the question so that we have a background, so that there is a history, so that there is a direction to, to go with and, and at that time it will be determined. I mean, if, if there's an overwhelming response that, no, it's not an amalgamation, it's about engaging in, in collaborative services providers, that sort of thing. I mean, we have a public works department, you know, Langford contracts out, maybe we can find a way to collaborate and, and offer up a service and, and get more bang for our buck. I'm not sure what that would look like. We've got an integrated police servicing already with the common factor of the RCMP that works well for us all, relatively speaking. I certainly wouldn't want to be in the position of Esquimalton and Victoria as they battle out their, their police woes in that department. So, you know, we've got, our firefighter end of things works well, we collaborate well, there might be a better way to, to bring things together. So there's lots to happen.
So I disagree with that because I think that is the outcome of whatever the question is and the analysis and the exploration that needs to happen is, you know, that analysis of, you know, integration and that sort of thing. So in item number two in the overview, I say to get to the, the question correct, there must be a process of public engagement, feedback through town hall meetings, communication pieces and engagement. So it's just whether or not, it's as simple as whether or not our public would like us to participate if the opportunity should present itself, which means if other municipalities are going to put a question on the ballot as well, that we would participate in the process as well of regionalization of services, integration, amalgamation, whatever it is. And at that point, we would be going to the provincial government and I would be asking them to take a lead role if there's enough municipalities interested. And if they're wanting support in the Southern Island, this is a perfect opportunity for them to say, you know what, we're going to undertake this and get you the analysis that you need in order to put whatever the question is on the ballot in 2017, whatever it may be. So I think we are complicating this way more than it has to be. We are no, I am not going to be set up to do all the analyzing and exploration that you're identifying because I don't have the capacity and you don't pay me enough money to do all of that. So I think we need to keep it simple, engage the public, create a committee, let's understand what the question needs to be, let's go out and door knock and talk to people and find out what the opportunity is, but let's not get into, are we regional, you know, fire departments and, you know, that's beyond this scope, way beyond, and the tail will really be wagging the friggin' dog.
Your dog has no tail.
Yes, he does. He's got a stub. Toot, toot, toot. Rob, you're being pretty quiet, man.
How are we?
Okay.
All right, the, may I? The issue I have in, in my other job that I do is action dates and action, when are things going to accomplish? We have an action date of an election and we know when that election's going to be. And if we don't say that we want to put something on, on the ballot, that doesn't drive us to actually make something happen. And that's, that's all my concern. I can't, I, I'm not disagreeing with anything that anybody's saying and I understand that we have to formulate the question and we don't know what the question is. But the, the initial recommendation says that we are supporting the initiative to have a question on the next election, on the next municipal election. And if, if that isn't part of this process, if we're saying we want to figure out what the question is before we even think about bringing it, that we're going to ask a question, then I'm not going to support it. Because either we're going to ask the public what they care, and I'm not even care if they say yes or no. I mean, I just want us to make sure we ask. It's been out there way too long. We keep talking, I mean, they can sell a lot of newspapers with it, but we don't actually have an answer. And the whole idea of a municipal election and having a question is so that we have a feeling of what the community wants. And we're all sitting here trying to pretend that we know what they want and we don't. And that's why we want to ask the question. So I can't, I can't do this if, if we're just saying we're going to figure out what the question is, that we have to commit that we're going to actually ask the question and I don't know what the question is.
I think it's possible we're reaching heated agreement.
Well, I'm just saying.
Okay. So let me, let me throw out some wording. I'm not making a motion, I'm throwing out wording. Just to be clear.
Let's have a comment from Counselor Harvey before we get there. I know we're getting a little tired, but I think, I think we're saying the same thing. We're talking about the what, which is the question, and the how, which is the process. And what I'm hearing is which comes first? The process or the question, or the question or the process? Regardless, if we get the wording right, it's, they're both going to be there. So over the next 18 months, we'll get there. So I, I mean, we could argue all night about the what and the how and what's first and what's second, but it's all going to be there. Sorry.
There you go.
Okay. I'll throw this out there, you guys can have fun with it. The council create a task force with a mandate to develop and implement an approach that will engage the Colwood public and other municipalities and develop a possible question for the ballot in 2014, asking Colwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process of amalgamation or integration of services should the opportunity present itself. What I think we did in there was create a task force, engage the public, the task force has a clear mandate to develop a possible question for the 2014 ballot.
Should the opportunity arise?
Should the opportunity present itself, yeah. And I hope we're all kind of clear on what that should the opportunity present itself piece, because I'm, I'm, I wonder if there might be a clearer way of phrasing that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that there is. Again, in the end, if other municipalities are not wanting to step up to the plate and put the question on, I don't see why Colwood cannot and people still have the opportunity to say. I think we've had a change in demographic in Colwood over the last number of years and, no, it's not a binding referendum, but it gives us a flavor, or the new council a flavor of what their, you know, residents want. I don't think it's a bad thing, engaging the public.
So how are we on those words?
Can you say it again?
Give it a try. Okay, the council create a task force with a mandate to develop and implement an approach that will engage the Colwood public and other municipalities and develop a possible question for the ballot, municipal ballot, election ballot in 2014, asking Colwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process of amalgamation or integ, or greater integration of services should the opportunity present itself. You got that right, Pat? Sure. Okay. Create a task force with a mandate to develop and implement an approach that will engage the Colwood public and other municipalities and develop a possible question for the municipal, 2014 municipal election ballot. And, and develop a possible question for the, and now I'm going back to wording that's in the current recommendation, the 2014 municipal election ballot, asking Colwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process of amalgamation or greater integration of services should the opportunity present itself.
Oh my God, that is convoluted. Why can't we just keep it simple? Support the initiative to have a question placed on the 2014 municipal election ballot, asking Colwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process of amalgamation or, and/or integration if it presents itself? Like, why do we have to complicate this?
I'm not sure we're necessarily trying to complicate it. I think we're trying to be clear that, that we want the task force and that we want the public engagement. So, I mean, the, the second part is.
So why don't we go with that recommendation hypothetically? The second recommendation is that a task force be created. Third recommendation, that 3,000 staff allocate or find $3,000 in order to support the public engagement process, meaning, you know, advertising, whatever it may be. Why don't we make three recommendations?
And that's what I had, on minus three.
Excellent. Great minds think alike.
I was just trying to pull it down into one, but you guys aren't going to go there, are you?
Okay, so we're, we're going to move three different recommendations then?
I think so.
Okay, let's go.
Can we, can we be clear what those three are before we start then?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the first one is in the report. I think it's just overarching. The ROR report does include the engagement, et cetera. So I would suggest, and this is my own opinion, and you know what that means. So that's the first one. The second one is to create a task force. And obviously, there would be a terms of reference and yada, yada, yada associated with it. And then the third one is for staff to identify $3,000 in the twenty, what year are we in?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, 2014 budget, to undertake engagement. And I see that happening, you know, almost immediately. However, as we ramp up, of course, then that's when the monies would be required. So that's my own little vision in my head.
Can we put in, when we get there, can we put in language for the task force to undertake engagement? Again, I'm trying to not create an assumption that we're putting a lot of Colwood staff time into this.
I think that that will come in the terms of reference.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll hop this down and...
I'm not looking to use up staff time other than Chris Pease.
Sorry, Chris.
He's got nothing better to do so.
Okay. Right, so shall we have, so it is a, do you want them split, one, two, and three, or do you want them all in one?
Split.
I think it's much easier and gives much clearer direction. Clearer direction.
It gives us much clearer direction for what we want if we break it into three. Personally.
All right.
So do we have, does Pat have them?
Have you got all three of them in there, Pat?
I think so.
What do you got, Pat?
Okay, the first one is support the initiative to consider, consider having a question placed on the 2014 municipal election ballot, asking Colwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process of amalgamation or integration of services should the opportunity present itself.
Excellent.
Create a task force with the mandate to develop and implement an approach that will engage the Colwood public and other municipalities and develop a possible question for the 2014 municipal election ballot, asking Colwood members. Did you go back into that?
That's way too complicated.
Yes, why not just go create, create a task force?
I think we just need to create the task force with a mandate to engage the public and, what's this?
No, just create a task force.
Just create a task force.
Yeah.
No mandates or anything?
No, we'll just do create a task force in terms of reference.
And then number three.
Allocate $3,000.
Allocate, staff to allocate $3,000 for public engagement, for the public engagement process.
Have I missed anything? Are you sure? Okay. Am I moving it?
You are.
You do that. Excellent. So I move the recommendation put forward? All three recommendations, I guess?
No, do it one at a time.
Do one at a time.
We're going to do it one at a time, we're doing it one at a time.
So am I reading that out because I don't have it before me?
So, so the...
So can, can we, for clarity, can we ask Pat to, to read the first motion?
The committee recommend to council, that council support the initiative to consider having a question placed on the 2014 municipal election ballot, asking Colwood residents if they would like their city to participate in the exploration process of amalgamation or integration of services should the opportunity present itself.
I will move that. Yes.
You don't need a second.
We don't.
No, 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 I, I didn't like the word consider.
Oh, sorry.
It says basically, to support the initiative to have, to consider having a question. I would rather be a lot more clear, I would like, rather be a lot more clear to say, support the initiative to have a question. Because consider basically means that we don't have to have a question.
The reason I like the word consider is there's an interesting process. What if the task force does it work, does its work, and very clearly hears loud and clear from Colwood residents that they have no interest in even moving forward with the question?
Then we rescind the motion? I mean, you can always rescind it.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. This, this is part of the, putting the, I, I would like to make sure that we have had a good conversation with the public before we say, this is what we're going to do, guys. My ten cents.
I respectfully disagree. Because, I mean, I, I, I mean, common sense is that, that, that we know amalgamation. We know that there's a question of amalgamation. People want, I think we have to have the question asked so that people can say yes or no. Even if it comes out that nobody wants amalgamation, like, let's just say 95% of the committee says, no, we don't need amalgamation, I still want the question asked so that, that it's resolved, that it's done. And so I, I don't want politicians making that decision that we're not going to ask the public if they want to have amalgamation or consideration use of, of that. So that, hence the reason why I would rather not just consider it. I'd rather it be decisive. We're either going to ask the question or we're not going to ask the question to the public.
And I'm okay with that.
And I'm okay with that.
You're moving, you're, you're moving the motion, Sherry, what do you?
I'll go with clarity. Ambiguity is, yeah. The objective is to ask questions, so, yes.
Remove the word consider?
Yeah, remove the word consider, I say. Are we voting on the first motion removing the word consider?
So I'll call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving forward on the first...
Second.
Or on the original, um, motion then, or like on the first motion?
With that, uh...
With, as amended? We have to vote on it.
I thought we were just voting on that first.
No, because we had to vote on picking the word...
The consider.
Consider out.
Now we have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're going back so that it's the amended version of the...
Sorry, I wasn't clear on, on the vote.
Yeah. And all those in favor of the amended? Opposed, motion carried? Recommendation number two?
Create a task force. Moved.
I think it needs something more than just create a task force because it's now an isolated motion, so create a task force to do what? I think you need something in there.
There has to be a purpose of the task force. So there is a...
Create a task force in terms of reference to support the process?
Yeah.
And we probably need process what, but...
You can always do reference to any above because of one, two, three separate ones.
Sorry, say that again?
If we're numbering them one, two, and three, create a task force to support the direction provided in number one above would probably suffice.
Yep. Works for me. I'll move it.
Have you got something? Because it's an amendment now, so we have to go, vote on the amendment? You have words on the amendment?
That you just, you just now?
Yeah.
Create a task force to...
Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
Yeah. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed, motion carries? Call and vote on now the amended motion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Number three, which is to do with the $3,000 financial commitment?
Before, before we add that, could, since we have the director of finance, could we maybe ask her opinion on that?
You can go right ahead.
May I ask that opinion?
You may.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The request is for $3,000 for 2014, and the budget process has not happened yet, so you probably...
It'll be for 2013.
It'll be for now, 2013, it will be done before the end of the year.
Oh, because I have 2014 budget.
Probably this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, change. 2013, we probably can't find $3,000 in our contingency.
Thank you.
And if I can just say, it may not be for this year, it may be for 2014, simply because with summer coming up and people being away on holidays, you know, we'll try and, what?
We may not get there to do that.
Exactly, so it's going to be September by the time we really ramp up, so, and then, of course, Christmas happens and Santa Claus comes, so, yeah. Okay.
So there are no...
So are we voting on...
There are no, no amendments to recommendation number three?
So she's got, uh, fine $3,000 in the 2013 budget?
Yeah.
Um, what if it's not 2013, what if it's 2014?
Then we deal with it as part of the budget process.
I know, but does she need it in the recommendation?
Yeah, not necessarily, it would be...
I don't want Rob to forget about it.
Oh, I won't forget.
We might have to, but by then, I don't know.
Okay. So are we okay with 2013?
I, I think it, I think it's okay for 2013, and we leave it if it doesn't work out. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Then I'll move it.
All righty, call the question on...
Wait, I have a question, sir.
Yes.
If we approve it for 2013 and we don't get to it until 2014, can we carry that forward?
Yes, we haven't used it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I asked.
Yep. It's out of contingency, so it just would come, it would become a budget item.
Okay.
The following year.
All right.
Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries?
Woo!
Are we there then?
Move adjournment?
Uh, yep. Move adjournment, Council Cullington, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Thank you, folks, for coming out and sharing your opinions. Now go home and tell all your neighbors. What's that?
He's saying it's a micro... The problem is, is I belong to a bureaucracy that I hate. I, I hate, I just get things started. I can't stand the process.
Well, one... But we're dealing with public funding, we're dealing with all these things, and if we don't have the right process in place, we are the ones that are in trouble. And that's what I'm trying...